Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our House Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, our first hearing of the session. It is Tuesday, January 28, 9:00 a.m. We are in room 325. And before some housekeeping notes, I'll just let my committee members introduce themselves really quickly, starting with.
Representative Amy Peruso, District 46, YPO Acres, Outuka Ana Point.
And vice chair of the committee this year. I'm Chair Nicole Owen, District 7.
Mathias Kush, District 1, Hilo, Hamakua.
And a secondary representative for Kona.
Back up, back up.
Great. I have a couple of housekeeping notes, and then we'll get started on the agenda. So because morning hearings have to adjourn prior to noon floor session, if not all testifiers have the opportunity to testify, please know your written testimony will be considered by the committee. For those on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and video off while waiting to testify and after you're done testifying. On Zoom, again, the Zoom chat function is allowed to allow you to chat with technical staff only. Please only use the chat for technical issues. If you're unexpectedly disconnected, you can attempt to rejoin, and if disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note the House is not responsible for any bad Internet connections on the testifier's end. And in the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images, and please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. And for those present here, we don't usually do time limits in my committee, but we do have a long agenda, so I ask that everyone remember we have reviewed all your written testimony, and we ask you to please be concise in your oral testimony. And so with that, we'll get started. First on the agenda this morning is House Bill 470 relating to noise. This is about leaf blower noise. And first up to testify, we have Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Matthew Carano. I'm the administrator of the Environmental Health Services Division. The Department of Health supports the intent of the bill. Any opportunity to reduce unnecessary noise pollution is something that's very important to the Department of Health. We do have some concerns about solely limiting the sale of the type of equipment noted based on decibel limits, and we provided comment in our written testimony. We're here to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And on Zoom, I think we have Department of Education. Oh, in person. Sorry. Please come forward.
Good morning, Chair, committee members. Audrey Downer for Superintendent Hayashi. We submitted comments with our written testimony. We'll be here for any questions.
Thank you. And Retail Merchants of Hawaii? Not present. Not present. And then we have Ted Bolin here in person.
Thank you, Chair Owen, Vice Chair Peruso, and members of the committee. Ted Bolin, as many of you know, I used to be an environmental representative, Department of Health, as Deputy Attorney General. When we think of environment, we often think of water pollution and air pollution. But there's another kind we don't think about as much as being an environmental problem, and that's noise, which can affect human health and also, of course, be rather irritating. So it's kind of a nuisance. This bill would attempt to limit the future sale, not current usage, but future sale of certain leaf blowers that are noisy. And it applies a national standard from the American National Standards Institute, B175.2 class for 65 decibels or higher. We propose to use decibel-adjusted DBAs, which is a better way to measure the effect on the human ear. Again, the bill does not affect usage. It does not attempt to regulate based on fuel types, which a number of these bills do, but they are preempted. Those bills are preempted under the Clean Air Act. This is just about noise. It's not about fuel type. So I thank the committee for the opportunity to testify. I know there are many bills with seem like higher priority, and I would acknowledge that, but this is a good one, and I hope you'll pass it. Thank you very much. Available for questions.
Thank you. And then we have three additional testimonies from individuals, two in support and one in opposition. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not members, any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to House Bill 742 relating to transit-oriented development. And this is requesting HCDNA prepare a programmatic EIS for Iwale Kapalama and UH West Oahu TOD improvements. And first up to testify, we have University of Hawaii.
Chair, if I may maybe take this a little bit out of order. My name is Craig Nakamoto. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Community Development Authority, and I'm asking--
Well, let's sorry, let's go in the just we'll go down in the order that we call people.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to give some background first that might be helpful for the testimony that's going to follow.
Okay, we have you on the list.
Okay, sure. All right.
Sorry, apologize about that. Aloha, Chair Owen, Vice Chair Peruso, and members of the committee. My name is Michael Shibata with the University of Hawaii's Office of Strategic Development and Partnership. The university supports House Bill 742 and stands on its written direct testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have HHFDC with comments.
Good morning, Chair, committee members. Dean Minakami, Executive Director of the Hawaii Housing Finance Development Corporation. We submitted comments basically stating that we prepared a master plan, infrastructure master plan for Iwale Kapalama area, and we're in the process right now of preparing a programmatic EIS for those improvements.
And now HCDNA, please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize. Chair Owen, Vice Chair Peruso, members of the committee, again Craig Nakamoto, Hawaii Community Development Authority Executive Director. Let me just allow me to just give some background on the projects for which this bill asks us to do environmental impact statements. In the 20, as part of our statutory scheme, as most of you probably know, we have development districts such as Kakako, Kalailoa, Heia, Pulehunui on Maui. And then additionally, the legislature created in HCDNA in 2022 a transit-oriented development infrastructure districts in the 2022 session, the purpose of which was to put in, give HCDNA the powers and the responsibility to implement infrastructure improvements that will help primarily affordable housing in TOD areas. The funding, the Iwale Kapalama project and the UH West Oahu project, in 2024, the legislature gave us appropriated 25 million for infrastructure upgrades to Iwale Kapalama, one of the TOD districts. And we've embarked on a project to upgrade the electrical system primarily to benefit the expansion that's going on at Merite Housing, the Leha Civic Center, and some private lands primarily to build affordable housing. The second project is the UH West Oahu Road Project. That project is to kind of fulfill the vision that UH West Oahu had in their land development plan, which is to build roads and housing on lands adjacent to their UH, you know, the campus lands. So we received 35 million in the 2024 legislature to build roads and related infrastructure for really phase one of that project. This project was kind of a multi-agency collaborative effort between UH, HHFDC, and HCDNA whereby UH would provide the land, so it's onsite infrastructure, onsite infrastructure and roads. HHFDC would issue an RFP for the development of housing, not just for students, but for everybody and other uses. And then HCDNA with the 35 million is going to build roads for, to support that housing, which we already have started to do through a design-build contractor. So I think, in essence, my message is that the tasks that are asked of in this bill are already works in progress or have been done already. If you look at Mr. Shibata's testimony or Mr. Young's testimony, they've already done an EIS for these, for UH West Oahu. In Director Minakami's testimony, they're working on finishing up the EIS for the Iwale Kapalama area. So I just wanted to provide that context and apologize for taking myself out of order there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And next up, we have Hawaii Yimby in support, and then Holomua Collaborative.
Good morning, Chair Owen, Vice Chair Peruso, committee members. I'll largely stand on our testimony in support. I'll just note briefly that the reason that we support this is it does seem to be a good and effective way to simultaneously try to make sure that we are evaluating impacts on our environment from further building, but also doing it in a way that streamlines the process of doing those EISs, and in a way that by having the government running point on that and funding it can ultimately provide cost savings for the people who are eventually going to be buying or renting homes in that area. And it is great to hear the work that is already being done by HCDNA, UH, and HHFDC. And I've just noted, I think in a couple of comments, they did note that there are some things that are asked for in this bill that are a little bit beyond what they've already done. And I think I saw, for instance, in UH's testimony that they'd be happy to work with HCDNA on doing that additional work if this passes. So with that, I'll sit down and around for any questions you have. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And then we have Mana'a Title Guarantee, HPM Building Supply. I think that is also Holomua Collaborative. Okay, sorry, the mix-up on the testimony list. And then Hawaii Apple Seed in support, not present, and an additional individual in support. Members, are there any questions on this bill, or is there anyone else here to testify on this? Seeing none, members' questions. Okay, great. All right, we will move on to House Bill 340. This is relating to the environment. Oops. It says requiring the Public Utilities Commission to establish, relating to renewable energy, requiring the PUC to establish a streamlined grid-ready home interconnection process. Authorizes the use of the herea surcharge for cost recovery of certain expenses of the Hawaii Electricity Reliability Administrator associated with grid-ready homes interconnection process. First up, we have DCCA.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Michael Angelo Owen. I'm the Executive Director of the Division of Consumer Advocacy, which is part of the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. And we stand on our written testimony providing comments on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Attorney General.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Ian Robertson, Deputy Attorney General. Our department submitted testimony submitting comments. And just to summarize, that is suggesting that on page four, line 18 to 19, the language indicating within 180 days of the effective date of this act, we've just suggested that it be amended to a specific date to avoid confusion after this is codified.
Great, thank you.
Available for questions.
And Public Utilities Commission.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Leo Ascension, Chair of the PUC. We'll stand on our written testimony providing comments, basically wanting to study the matter further, but then adhering to the 180 days to provide a report and a framework back to the committee or to the legislature, in fact, on the progress, doing that framework.
Thank you. And Green Power Projects LLC in support, 350 Hawaii in support, Solaray Corporation in support, Independent Energy in support, and then we have Hawaii Solar Energy Association.
Good morning, Chair Owen, Vice Chair Peruso, and members of the committee. I'm Rocky Mold, the Executive Director of the Hawaii Solar Energy Association. I'll stand on our written comments, strongly supporting this bill, and just note that this bill really is about moving to the next level of really powerful grid-interactive technologies that will allow us to achieve our renewable energy goals, our resilience goals, at much lower cost, much more efficiently, and really take us to the next level of a grid of the future for Hawaii. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them. I'll note that I do offer an amendment that includes electric vehicle charging and vehicle-to-grid directly to the bill, and that's very important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we have Hawaiian Electric.
Aloha and good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Kuyulani Shinsato. I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric. I won't go over all of my testimony. I'll keep it brief, but I did want to mention two points. We do definitely support the intent of the bill to grow DERs in Hawaii. However, we do respectfully oppose the process that's in the bill. The first thing I wanted to mention for the committee's consideration is when I read through the testimonies in support of the bill and when I read the bill, it looks like there's sort of an underlying theme that we are delaying the process. It's very costly. And I just wanted to offer something to kind of challenge that narrative, and that is, for the past four years, we've had an interconnection approval performance incentive mechanism, or PIM. And this was given to us by the PUC. It was designed specifically to incentivize us to speed up interconnection approval times. And I want to submit that it has done its job, because for the past four years, we've been achieving high levels of performance and getting monetary rewards on the PIM. And so I mentioned this not to brag, but to, again, challenge the narrative that's in the bill that were slow. And our process is not perfect. I totally recognize that. We are always open to finding improvements in our process, and we've been, I think, doing a good job collaborating with the solar industry and with stakeholders over the years. We're absolutely willing to do that, to find more improvements. And so our preference is to go that route through collaboration versus going through legislation. The second point I wanted to note is that the-- The second point I wanted to note is that the bill focuses on our service upgrade process. And I wanted to clarify that most customers who apply for rooftop solar and battery, normal residential customers come straight through us. We give them an initial review, initial technical review, we approve them for installation. And on Oahu last year, we did that on an average of 10.5 business days, which is fast. It's tier one. It's the highest level of performance for our PIM. So that's the normal customer wanting to do this. We do have a subset of customers who decide to upgrade their service, and they're the ones that go through the service upgrade process. And generally, if it's a simple 100 to 200 amp upgrade, we actually don't charge them for those costs. It's only when the upgrade gets complicated, there's trenching, stuff like that, the customer's electrician is going to have to charge them more for the job. So again, we've been working with the solar industry. We understand their concerns. We want to find improvements where we can to our process, but our preference is, again, to do it through collaboration versus legislation. Thank you very much for hearing my points. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. And then we have additional testimony in support from Photon Works Engineering, in support from Tesla, and in support from one individual. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? I have a couple of questions, I guess, starting with Hawaiian Electric. So I think there have been improvements in, you know, timeliness of interconnection processes when you're looking at older technology, but I think maybe the concern and that you're seeing in testimony is that with the newer technologies that are available, there's a lesser amount of, you know, feeling comfortable with it, and that process has been slower. So while you might be seeing, you know, achieving the incentives in the PIM, it doesn't mean there hasn't been delays on kind of being able to adopt and approve the newer technologies. So, I mean, would you agree with that?
I appreciate the question. I would ask for more specific information, I guess, on the newer technologies. From my perspective, all of the newer technologies we adopt, as long as they're, you know, up to our standards, we adopt them. For example, we have an equipment list, and so if the technology is new and it applies by our standards, we will add that technology to our equipment list. And so everything coming on, we'll check that equipment list and make sure it's on there. So we do try to integrate new technologies and then make sure, again, that we are processing things as fast as we possibly can.
So where are you with the, like, UL 1741, in terms of evaluating that?
I think it's already a part of our process. I'm looking to my colleague here. Yes, it is a part of our process.
Okay. All right, I have questions for some others, but did you have a question? Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess for Hawaii Solar Energy Association. And just same question from your guys' perspective.
Yeah, so we are, as member companies of HSCE have been trying to interconnect through, like, new UL 1741 features, there has been more pushback on that. There's this export-import limiting feature in particular that utilizes inverter technology to do a lot of the export control and grid interaction that we're looking for to help the grid. And there's been some pushback on that a little bit. We are, you know, potentially working through these in the collaborative process, but really we think with UL 1741 equipment coming, this really opens up the door, and there really is less of a need for, like, interconnection studies and, you know, looking at, like, system-level hosting capacity, because these grid-interactive features in UL 1741 really handle that stuff. They really actually support the grid and actually balance, help balance the grid. And so some of these checks and balances, we don't think are necessary anymore in the process.
All right, thank you. And then last question for consumer advocate. Just on the cost, on the impact to ratepayers, I guess, those concerns, would it alleviate your concerns if we just adjust that cost share amount or blanket out for now for further discussion, like whether more of that should fall on, a higher amount should fall on the customer? Who's?
If we blanked it out, and I think the, some consideration around the use of the reliability surcharge to pay for it, we have concerns around that as well.
Right, and remove that, actually remove that section altogether.
Remove that, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's, that would alleviate your concerns.
That would alleviate our concerns.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions, members? All right, if not, we are moving on to House Bill 243. So this is kind of similar, trying to address similar concerns in a little bit different way relating to energy. So this is requiring PV and EV-ready new residential construction. And first up, we have Hawaii State Energy Office.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Maria Tome with the Hawaii State Energy Office. We will stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Green Party of Hawaii in support. Citizens Climate Lobby in support. Climate Protectors Hawaii in support. Ted, come forward.
Thank you, Chair Lowen. I'll be brief. This is a, kind of a, in my mind, a no-brainer. It's cheaper to install PV and EV-ready equipment before you build as opposed to coming back and having to retrofit with construction. It's five times as expensive, I believe. So please pass this bill and save people some money. Thank you.
Thank you. 350 Hawaii in support. Hawaii Electric Vehicle Association in support. We have Hawaii Solar Energy Association offering comments. Not testifying, not signed up to speak in person. Alliance for Automotive Innovation on Zoom, not present. Kauai Climate Action Coalition in support. Chamber of Sustainable Commerce in support. We have NIAO Hawaii Chapter in opposition. Not present. And then we have 21 additional testimonies, all in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? All right. I had a question for NIAO, but they're not here, so we'll move on. Next bill on the agenda is House Bill 350 relating to energy. So this expands the types of water heater systems to satisfy the requirement for a building permit, so basically adding heat pump water heaters alongside solar hot water heating to the types of heaters not requiring a variance. And first up to testify, we have Public Utilities Commission. Wait, sorry. Hang on, wrong page. Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Hawaii State Energy Office stands on its testimony in support. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Will Gysi, Solaray Corporation on Zoom.
Good morning. I'm, if you'll allow me the indulgence, I'm joined by my colleague Calvin. He's been on the job for five months, but he's very opinionated. My name is Will Gysi. I am the Senior Director of Government Affairs for Solaray. Solaray has been around for 50 years in Hawaii as a renewable energy corporation. We're locally owned and operated right there in Oahu, but we have facilities on every major island, and we are also the largest domestic manufacturer of solar thermal collectors through two of our companies, one based in California and one based in Florida. We submitted comments on this, so, you know, we, as a company, we sell all kinds of water heaters. We do solar hot water, but we also sell heat pumps, electric water heaters, and instant gas demand water heaters. We've been deeply involved with the solar water heater mandate. We actually had a very productive working group meeting yesterday, the Hawaii State Energy Office, on this exact topic. We don't outright oppose this bill, but I would just ask two things. One is that we're really encouraged to see the removal of the 15-year lifespan, so part of that is driven by, like, the Department of Energy, which considers properly maintained solar thermal system as lasting a minimum of 20 years, which is what we have seen in the market for the last 50, so it's very encouraging to see that provision removed. The other thing is we've offered some amendments just on basically aligning solar thermal energy efficiency performance with heat pump performance. So if heat pumps are to be considered an equal technology to be installed under a mandate like solar thermal has been, they should have to perform from an energy efficiency perspective in the same way. And so in Hawaii, for new homes, and part of the standard is through Hawaii Energy's Technical Reference Manual, you have to meet at least a minimum of a 90% solar fraction to install a solar water heater on new homes, which means that 90% of the energy that is used to heat water in any given year is from solar, and the remaining 10% is from backup. Now, heat pumps are efficient, but as far as I know, they are about maybe two to three times as efficient as a typical gas or electric water heater, but they are not 90% efficient as a solar thermal system would be. We would love to see heat pumps that are that efficient, but I would say that if we were mandating efficient technology that is to be used outside of what would be requested for a variance under the current law, that it be aligned and on the same playing field as the efficiency required for a solar thermal system. That is why solar thermal systems are so successful in the state, is because they're allowed to be the most efficient way to heat water, which can save you up to 40% on the average electric bill of a residence in Hawaii, partly because water heating is usually one of the largest, if not the largest, single electrical heating loads that a home will experience. So, you know, we appreciate the committee hearing this. We appreciate the bill, and we just offered that one amendment to be considered, but we're excited to have that conversation and be happy to answer any questions, if there are any. And thanks for allowing my associate to join.
Thank you. And let's see, next we have Hawaii Solar Energy Association with comments. And Hawaii Energy in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? Members, any questions? Um, do you have a question? Or I guess Energy Office, you might be the, my best bet. The suggested amendment that Will was talking about, if I can pull this up. Sorry, hang on, let me just find this. Was to say that a heat pump water heater that has a coefficient of performance equivalent to the minimum 90% solar factor required for solar hot water heaters?
So, so like a COP of 10?
Well, I'm asking you, I'm not familiar with, like, how these are technically measured, but I'm just, I'm just wondering, I just want to check if we included that kind of provision, would it rule out a lot of people being able to opt for a heat pump in Hawaii?
I think one of the other pieces of this is how heat pumps can work with photovoltaics. So if you have photovoltaics, you still need a variance under this law. But heat pump water heaters could be using the energy from the photovoltaic, so it's possible that some combination of that would be equivalent, and so that might be worth looking at, because it could be specified in such a way that if you have photovoltaics and heat pump, that would meet the same type of efficiency.
Can you speak into the mic? Sorry, I can't hear you very well.
It could be that a combination of photovoltaics and heat pump would be, would meet that as well. So that is definitely an interesting approach that would recognize both the ability of the solar energy through photovoltaics to support the system on, you know, on a roof. Also, as we get more renewable energy on the system, on the electricity system, then the heat pump's ability to use any of the excess during the day when that's available, especially, you know, as we have higher quantities of it and we're trying to manage the grid, these heat pump water heaters can be very helpful there as well. So that, we're looking forward to that as well.
Can you not have the same kind of grid interaction with a solar hot water system?
Yeah, no, no. If you look on the Energy Star site and you look at whether they are grid-interactive, none of the solar water heaters on the Energy Star site indicate that they are grid-interactive.
Sorry, that's incorrect.
Okay.
Okay, hang on, hang on, Will.
Anyway, but there may be other information.
Okay, well, maybe, and if Hawaii Energy was here, I would ask them as well, but I guess I'm just curious about the impact of this particular amendment, so thank you. Yeah, thanks.
So we, yeah, we see it as a positive, especially going forward.
But this particular amendment suggested by Hawaii Solar Energy Association?
Yeah, I would need to see the actual language.
Okay, all right.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Chair.
We'll follow up. Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, for the Hawaii State Energy Office, I'm sorry, I didn't get to the microphone fast enough. Thank you for your response to that question. My question is that we're not talking about the size of the home. I think everybody has a picture here of a three-bedroom, two-bath home, and how would this relate to a smaller home when you incorporate the costs of a solar, like, today we have passed a lot of legislation for ADUs? How would this relate to a smaller, like, ADU or two-bedroom, one-bath home where the cost of solar compared to a heat pump would interact? And this proposed legislation?
Yeah, our office handles variance requests, so when a home builder is proposing an alternative water heating system, they're not putting a solar heater on there, you know, they say we don't have enough sun, or it's not feasible, or it's too costly, they actually have to do the analysis comparing the alternative water heating system to the solar water heating system, so that addresses those differences in the number of people going to be in the home and the amount of water used and so forth. That's why, I guess, the variance process was put in place.
Okay, so that would stay intact even if this 90% coefficient amendment was adopted?
Well, it's the 90%, the solar water heater mandate requires that the solar thermal system actually have 90% of the energy going into the water coming from the sun. I mean, that's already in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. All right, last question, I guess. Did we lose Solaray? Did we lose Will?
Nope, I'm still here.
Okay, sorry, our Zoom is, for some reason, not highlighting. I'm going to wait for them to fix that real quick. Okay, there you are. So, sorry, for your amendment, this, if you could just explain what would the specific impact of your amendment be? Like, if we pass the bill as it is currently versus if we included the amendment, how would that impact how many, you know, how many people could opt for a heat pump over a solar hot water system?
Well, I think that would be kind of an HSCO question, because they're the ones who do the variance, but I would say that, I'll just say that the Hawaii State Energy Office has a very comprehensive process in evaluating the efficiencies of these systems. So I would imagine that they would adopt a new lifecycle cost analysis tool that is currently used to be able to determine whether a system that was installed with a heat pump was able to meet that solar fraction. So as Maria...
Well, you must have some familiarity of how many systems would meet that.
I do.
Can you share?
So as Maria pointed out, I think you would be able to meet potentially that fraction if you installed a heat pump system in concurrence with a solar PV system, right? And so then you would, you would have a situation in which the water heating is 90% or greater provided by renewable energy as opposed to electric resistance, as it would be in the case of a heat pump, or through a refrigeration cycle, which still takes electrical energy. So I would say that, like, that's really more of a, kind of a administrative question for the HSCO, but I, from what I've seen through my, I would say now almost decade of experience with the LCC tool that HSCO has developed, I think it'd be well within their ability to kind of add that on there for this. My whole point is offering an amendment that brings the efficiency of a heat pump on a level playing field of an efficiency with an average solar water heater that's installed. That is the whole point of this, this piece of legislation that was passed many years ago, is that, at least in Hawaii... that was passed many years ago is that, at least in Hawaii, solar thermal systems are the most efficient way to heat water as long as you have access to adequate solar resources. Um, and over the life of the system, that makes sense for most residents because they did not have to pay an electric bill for that portion of the load. Um, I'd be happy to address the demand response portion too quickly if if you'd allow me, but I'll pause there.
I would like to hear your response to that. So go ahead.
So um, so Maria is is partially correct on the Energy Star side, demand response, quote unquote, doesn't exist for solar water heating, but that's because it does exist for the backup water heater that has to be um installed as part of a solar thermal system. So all solar thermal systems, and all heat pumps for that matter, have a backup heating element. Um, typically, that's an electric resistance, or it could be gas. Um, for a solar thermal system, you can attach it to a heat pump if you wanted to. Each one of those water heaters has the capability to be a demand response water heater. Our company as well, you know, we, yeah, I can't speak for all solar thermal manufacturers, but for many years, we have designed and developed a smart controller demand response device um that I think Hawaii Energy is is, I think they utilize for their systems. So it's, it is incorrect to say that solar thermal systems cannot also function as demand response devices. I think the broader point is that a well working solar thermal system typically doesn't need to function as a demand response device because it is removing a majority of that demand um that would otherwise be present for the water heating system anyway. Um, but if it needed to function that way, let's say you had like a week of cloudy weather and you were running your electric resistance backup, very well that electric resistance could function through any smart controller that you could that is commercially available. So i- it doesn't matter if it's a solar thermal system. The solar thermal system is going to be attached to a water heater that can function as a demand response device like any normal water heater would, because that's what it is.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions, members? Okay, we will move on to the next bill on the agenda, House Bill three four six relating to electric vehicle charging infrastructure. This provides rebates for the installation of um electric vehicle ready parking stalls for new construction of affordable housing. And first up to testify, we have Public Utilities Commission.
Good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Peruso, and members of the committee. I'm Ashley Norman. On behalf of Chair Assuncheon at the Public Utilities Commission, we stand on our written testimony in support with comments, and I'm available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Maria Tome, Hawaii State Energy Office, will stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have um the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Danielle Bass, State Sustainability Coordinator from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We offer testimony and support. We think that this is a good bill that incentivizes affordable housing developers to to install electrical electric vehicle charging and parking infrastructure for new developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have Green Party of Hawaii in support. Climate Protectors Hawaii in support.
Thank you, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Peruso, and members of the committee. Ted Bowlen on behalf of the Climate Protectors Hawaii. We support this bill. It seems to me it's mostly about equity. The move to electric vehicles is coming. And if we don't include lower income people, people in affordable housing, they're going to be left behind. That is unfair, and this bill would help to make available to those people um the same access that people with no money may are already buying. I would add that uh ground transportation is the leading uh area, the leading sector where we could make progress on reducing greenhouse gases, greenhouse gas emissions in Hawaii. And this is one opportunity to have more electric vehicles in a place where there are barriers and otherwise when it might not happen. So thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Hawaiian Electric in support.
Good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Peruso, members of the committee. I'm Jamila Jarman on behalf of Hawaiian Electric. Um, we stand in support of our testimony. Um, we're here for any comments or questions.
Thank you. And we have three fifty Hawaii in support, Hawaii Electric Vehicle Association in support, Citizens Climate Lobby in support, Hawaii Energy now present in support.
Good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Peruso, members of the committee. Chester Carson on behalf of Caroline Carl for Hawaii Energy, and we stand in our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have R E R Rides E V in support, Kawaii Climate Action Coalition in support, Alliance for Automotive Innovation on Zoom, not present, um E A H Housing in support, Coalition Earth in support, and then we have eighteen additional individuals all in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not members, any questions? No, okay, that was an easy one. Uh, we will move on to House Bill three six six relating to renewable energy. Um, this is relating to uh contested cases on environmental assessments uh for renewable energy projects. And first up to testify, we have the Public Utilities Commission with comments.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Daniel Park on behalf of Leo Assuncheon, Chair of the Commission. Um, we'll stand on our written testimony, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Uh, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development with comments.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, member. I'm Tom Eisen with Office of Planning and Sustainable Develops Environmental Review Program. It's still quite a mouthful. We stand on our submitted comment and remain available to respond to questions about our suggested edits. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Life of the Land with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. It appears, at least to us, that there are two sections of law that offer both saying that they take precedent over other sections and offer some contradictions. Aloha.
Uh, Ted Bowlen, Climate Protectors Hawaii in support. Okay, thank you. Uh, Kawai Island Utility Cooperative in support. And then we have three fifty Hawaii in opposition and Hawaii Clean Power Alliance in opposition. That's all the testimony I had submitted in advance. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not members, questions? Um, Henry, I think your in-person testimony was as enigmatic as your written testimony. Would you like to explain what you mean?
Yeah, the bill says that notwithstanding other sections of law, the bill takes effect, takes precedent. And Chapter two sixty nine guarding the P U C says the same thing, that notwithstanding other sections of law, the P U C section takes precedent. So the question is, if one says twenty megawatts or more, and one says any amount, and other things like that, which one holds? Um, if one says incinerators are covered and one says incinerators aren't covered, which ones hold? So um, we think that one of them should save, takes precedent over the other one and not both.
Okay, we'll take a closer look at that. All right, thank you. Any other questions, members? All right, seeing none, we will move on to House Bill three four two relating to renewable gas tariff. Uh, first up to testify, we have D C C A.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Michelangelo. I'm the Executive Director of Division of Consumer Advocacy. We stand on our largely stand on our written comments. Um, but I will note that uh we're in agreement with the P U C that a rate case is the preferred method for addressing this tariff. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Public Utilities Commission.
Good morning again, Daniel Park for the P U C. Um, we'll stand on our written testimony once again and um echo the consumer advocates' comments that we do prefer that any sort of renewable gas tariff be considered in the context of a general rate case. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have State Energy Office in support. It looks like we lost Maria. Um, Henry Curtis, Life of the Land.
Aloha, Henry Curtis, Life of the Land. We support the C A and the P U C. This is not the proper vehicle. In addition, there is no indication by the gas company that they're increasing their use of renewable energy in the next five years and maybe much longer. Therefore, this bill will not incentivize them to move into renewable energy. It will only allow them to have a higher profit margin on any renewables they currently have, and the profit margins are set by the P U C and should not be set by the utility. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, then we have that Hawaii Gas in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Nathan Nelson. I'm the General Counsel at Hawaii Gas. I want to take a step back and talk about what we're trying to solve for. We agree with the consumer advocate and the Public Utilities Commission that there is in fact a process to have a renewable tariff. That process is a rate case. That rate case costs two to three million dollars in order to prosecute, and it takes two to three years to two, excuse me, two years, up to two years to complete. That's important, and it's important for Hawaii Gas. We are currently in a rate case right now, and Hawaii Gas tries to keep rates as stable as possible, and so they don't file rate cases frequently. What the impact of that means is that if we have to wait for another rate case, you're talking about twenty thirty before we'll propose another renewable natural gas tariff. And that's important. And we think if we're serious about speeding up and getting faster, we should think about alternative mechanisms in order to do this. This is about a process. It's not about substantive, and I appreciate Life of the Land's comments and others that try to get into details about fossil fuels and all the rest of that. That's not what this is about. This is about a process. There'll be an opportunity to debate those, what is and what isn't, and what's renewable natural gas and what's not. And that's in the docket proceeding itself. But what we're trying to solve for is coming up with a faster process that doesn't cost two to three million dollars and doesn't require us to wait two years for a rate case. We don't think the twenty thirty is the appropriate vehicle for that. So what are the types of issues that rate cases solve for? And it's important. They take a look at what the impacts of a proposed change will have on all of your customers. We agree. But if you look carefully at the language of what we are proposing, there's a couple of things. Number one, the proposed measure says we're not going to have an increase in customer rates, okay? Those are the types of things that you decide in a rate case. If there's no increase in customer rates, and the rate is voluntary, people can ascribe to it, there's no harm or prejudice to others on the system, and that's important. So what we're suggesting is that there be two vehicles, a rate case vehicle for certain renewable gas tariffs where there's a widespread implication for other customers on the system, and separately, an accelerated process if there isn't. If you're not going to raise rates on other customers, we think it makes sense. Now, it's not fair to ask the Public Utilities Commission to step up to the plate and make a decision very, very quickly within six months. We get that. We understand that. At the same time, if we're going to ask them to move faster, we have to move faster as well. And what we're proposing in this accelerated mechanism is the ability to file by August thirty first a renewable natural gas tariff. So both people have their feet to the fire. The gas company has to move faster. The Public Utilities Commission has to move faster with respect to its decision making. I think the other piece that's important is the part that I touched on about impact to customers, and that's really important. And that's the differentiation between the two processes. There's a rate case process if you have a big impact on customers, but there's an accelerated process if you don't. And I think that there's general agreement with the consumer advocate and others, if there aren't impacts to rates for other customers, that it may make sense to do this. We've offered amendments to try to address some of the Public Utilities Commission concerns, and those amendments have been provided by the clerk this morning. And we hope that those amendments address at least what we understand are the Public Utilities Commission's concerns related to the bill. And with that, I'll rest, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. And then we have an additional individual in support. That is all the testimony I had submitted in advance. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not members, questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on to House Bill seven eight six. This is relating to the deposit beverage container program, and some of the changes this bill proposes are um in service of trying to increase the availability and convenience of actually redeeming our deposit beverages to get our five cents back. Uh, and first up to testify is the Attorney General.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Lyle Leonard, Deputy Attorney General. Um, the Department has identified an issue. The bill provides for a grant but does not establish standards that may conflict with the state constitution. There are some suggested amendments in the written testimony, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Department of Health.
Uh, morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Uh, I'm Lee Notsu, speaking on behalf of Department of Health. Uh, and we stand on our written testimony, providing comments on the measure.
Thank you. And then Hawaii Food Industry Association on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair, and committee members. Lauren Zorbal on behalf of Hawaii Food Industry Association. Um, we submitted testimony in opposition. Um, it's important to remember that retail businesses do not have control over the space in which they operate. Landlords have strict rules about what type of behavior is allowed in their stores. Many of them prohibit um collection of waste, including recyclables in large quantities outside of the premise of the retail location. Um, so for that reason, we we oppose the bill, and we also wanted to highlight um some of the findings of the auditor's report, which are fairly extensive, um, and not one of the recommendations was um about um forcing retailers to accept the recyclables back to the premises. So thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Uh, that's all the testimony we had submitted in advance. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not members, questions? Um, I guess I'll start with Lauren. Um, just to clarify, because you mentioned the auditor's report, but I pulled that up to refresh my memory, and it was a financial report of the Deposit Beverage Container Special Fund that was sort of focused on whether there was um fraud happening with the redemption centers. And if it didn't recommend or recognize that there was an issue with the lack of convenience for consumers in, you know, how to redeem these deposit beverage containers, that's because that wasn't the mandated topic of the audit. So how would you respond to that?
I mean, they did have a lot of extensive um recommendations about attempting to reduce fraud and um basically examples of fraud within the program um which they felt had not been addressed.
Yeah, but I mean, I guess that was the core of your of the testimony was to say this wasn't recommended in the auditor's report.
Yeah, I mean, and also that, you know.
A lot of things weren't recommended in the auditor's report.
Promises that most of them are operating within the provisions provided by the landlords.
Yeah. Could you, the bill does still have a blank for kind of exempting the smaller operations. Could could you think about like what kind of square footage might be appropriate to insert in there?
Both small and large operate under leases. I don't, I don't think there's really a, it's not necessarily a matter of small versus large, it's a matter of own property versus not own property, and also like regulations regarding the, you know, the area in which they operate.
Well, should we just make a number up then?
Well, I just, I think that there's an example of a lot of large retailers that are operating lease under leases. I think the vast majority are.
Yeah, but I would think a large retailer like a Safeway or a Foodland has confined space, you know, inside if that's an issue. I mean, I would like to know if this claim about their landlord's lease is not allowing it is, how many um of the actual facilities it applies to?
I think there's also like, you know, health and safety concerns with, you know, bringing in, you know, potentially cockroaches and other um critters that might be living in recycling bins. If we're dumping those inside of a grocery store, that could potentially create some health and safety issues. If we leave them outside, it can create some um smell issues and, you know, rotting, et cetera, because most of these items are not cleaned before they're returned. Um, and the Department of Health testimony actually is is pretty good. It it talks about, you know, that there are kind of a lot of issues surrounding um, you know, the rules that there are a lot of people that attempted to do the reverse vending machines, and it was very costly, um, that none of them are currently operating. Um, proposes that they even say in their testimony, it proposes a financial and logistical hardship for retailers.
All right, thanks, Lauren. We did read the testimony. Thank you. Um, okay, well, if you can think about, I mean, whether it's um reverse vending, I'm probably going to work on this bill a little more before we pass it out, but I think the lack of convenience for redeeming these containers is a huge issue. And the primary reason why, you know, that money sits there and doesn't get claimed is because it's very inconvenient to redeem them. Um, and so whether it's reverse vending machines or through other, you know, options, it'd be, I'd like to figure out a way to address it, and I'd, it'd be nice to have help from H F I A in figuring that out.
Yeah, so our recommendation in in other testimony that we submitted on a different bill was um Yeah, so our recommendation and other testimony that we submitted on a different bill was to use some of the funds, the, you know, over $50 million in the fund, to expand curbside recycling, because there's just a lot of data that that is the more efficient system and that,
Well, curbside recycling gets the containers recycled, but it doesn't get the customers their deposit back.
Yeah.
So it's not a viable solution.
I'm going to do a poll on that. I don't think 10 cents is going to be enough to get people to drive to return garbage in their cars, but I mean, you know,
You know, I, I disagree because I've lived in places where you do redeem it, and when it's convenient, you redeem them and it works. So I've seen, we've seen it work in other jurisdictions. So I think people are happy to get their five cents back if it's something they can take back when they go back to the grocery store. It happens in a lot of other states. All right, thank you. I guess for Department of Health. Hi, sorry.
Good morning.
Can you, how, what is the balance in the Deposit Beverage Container Special Fund right now?
I don't have the precise amount, but it's in the neighborhood of $50 million.
About $50 million? Okay. All right. I pulled, I pulled it up online, and it's, I mean, it was a 2324 special fund report, and it looked like the balance was like $19 million. So I'm just curious, like, where we find those numbers, and if it's more like 50?
I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. I guess, I guess because your testimony did express how there has been issues with the reverse vending machines, I mean, what do you see as a more viable solution then? Because clearly the system isn't working as it should right now.
Actually, with the removal of the exemptions for the dealers to offer redemption services, along with the proposed regional centers, I think that is actually, I mean, I think that has the potential to work, because it keeps, it keeps the siding of the CRCs, you know, up, up to the market, essentially, instead of us trying to, you know, plop in a CRC and supporting that CRC.
Well, I guess the idea of the, you know, grants for reverse vending machines, the idea was if we're going to remove all these exemptions to try to provide some kind of assistance or incentive back to the, you know, retailers, so it's more of trying
Especially ones that have little space.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like maybe they'd rather just repeal all the exemptions.
The reason why we inserted, you know, tried to explain that situation is, we did actually have a RVM grant program in the early days of the, the program, pre-2010. And we did fund RVMs for a good number of CRCs. I don't know if every CRC took advantage of it, but the larger ones, such as Reynolds, Triple R, installed CRC, RVMs both at physical locations and Triple R developed mobile units where they had trucks going, you know, Tuesday, Thursday here, Monday, Wednesday, Friday there, that kind of thing. And those kind of ran its course over the, say, two, three, four years. And all of the CRCs that operated RVMs eventually stopped use of them because of operational issues.
They just break a lot?
Well, I mean, even when they're working well, they have only limited capacity, right? So you would have to have an attendant, right, stop, empty the RVM, reinsert, and then customer can continue. That was one thing, and then sort of the cleanliness factor, because soda, beer, juice, all that kind of stuff. And on the sort of operational side, the RVMs that were used then identified containers or DBC containers from non-DBC by scanning the barcodes. And so like, the, the little databases in the machines would have to be updated as new products are introduced, right? So I think there were, they might have been maybe on a lease basis and, right, because the company had to come in and update the, the software, essentially. And the last thing was, essentially, there was just one company that offered RVMs. It was a near monopoly situation. It was Tomra out of Norway. So that was the other part, right? It's all the way from Europe and.
Okay. Okay, well, I think maybe after the hearing, you know, I'd like to get together and talk about what we can do. And probably put decision making on this bill off for a couple of days. And also for Lauren, if she's still listening, we'd like to include you in those conversations.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, members? All right, if not, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to House Bill 750 relating to the environment. This is our Extended Producer Responsibility Needs Assessment Bill. And first up, oh, sorry, I apologize. Hang on, I got a sticky note here that we, someone was on Zoom that was skipped over for the prior bill, so before we move on, we're going to go back to House Bill 342 and see, get testimony from the Coalition for Natural Gas, if they're still there.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Chair, members of the committee. My name is Yannick Sures. I'm the Western Legislative Affairs Manager at the Coalition for Renewable Natural Gas. Our coalition represents over 400 members across North America. I'm here in support of HB 342. We believe that this legislation represents a thoughtful and balanced approach to accelerating renewable energy development deployment while maintaining strong consumer protections, and believe that this measure will help support Hawaii's transition to a sustainable and carbon-free future. We especially wanted to note that this, the bill's voluntary structure is particularly noteworthy, and believe that it allows environmentally conscious consumers to support renewable gas development while ensuring that no cost impacts to other customers. This approach aligns perfectly with Hawaii's goals to reduce dependence on imported petroleum as well as strengthen energy security. I appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony today, and I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for this testifier? All right, if not, we will move on to House Bill 750, the EPR Needs Assessment. First up to testify, we have Climate Mitigation, Change and Mitigation Adaptation Commission.
Hello, Chair Loh and Vice Chair Peruzzo, members of the committee. Leah Laramie with the Climate Change Mitigation Adaptation Commission. We stand on our testimony and support. Hello.
Thank you. And then Department of Health.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Lee Notsu, speaking on behalf of Department of Health. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure.
Thank you. And Hawaii Food Industry Association with comments on Zoom.
Good morning, committee members. We submitted comments on this measure. We would like to request that the list of stakeholder members on the advisory council be amended to include one representative from a business which manufactures consumer packaged goods for sale in Hawaii. And also a recommended amendment that they exempt things like prescription medication, medical devices, and supplements. As other states, EPR programs has exempted these items due to the fact that there's a very complex and highly regulated framework for OGC consumer healthcare packaging. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And then we have Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition, Ted Bolin, in support. Thank you. Ameripen on Zoom, offering comments.
Yep. Good morning, Chair Loh and Vice Chair Peruzzo. My name is Andy Hackman. Here on behalf of Ameripen. Represent the entire packaging supply chain, folks that make packaging components, brands that use those components, and some folks that recycle those components. We stand on our comments, but we also want to thank you and the committee for its work on this legislation since last year. We would encourage additional amendments to potentially consider adopting a producer responsibility organization, but we appreciate that the definition of producer is going to be something that's going to be examined under the needs assessment. We believe the advisory council is a good addition to the legislation. We'd support the comments of the Hawaii Food and Industry Association as well, and just really appreciate the work that's gone into this needs assessment process. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. American Cleaning Institute in support. Hawaii Farmers Union in support. Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Flexible Packaging Association with comments, and three additional individuals in support. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions. If not, I have a quick question for Department of Health. For this, for this bill, I'm thinking about as a source of funding for the needs assessment, actually, instead of doing a general fund appropriation, maybe using some of that funds, that, some of the funds that are sitting in the Deposit Beverage Container Special Fund. Do you think that the allowable uses of the special fund already accommodate that, or would there need to be an amendment?
There would need to be an amendment.
Okay. Okay, all right. We'll think about doing that then. And if you can think about what the wording on that might, might need to look like.
Okay, and for sure, I'm getting back to you a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, members? Nope. All right, all right. If not, we will move on to House Bill 339 relating to electric utilities. So this requires a PUC to consider imposing certain conditions on approval of an application for an acquisition, merger, consolidation of an electric utility, and establishes a process where if there's a proposed acquisition, merger, or consolidation of a utility, there would be an opportunity for competing bids from non-investor-owned utilities. And first up to testify, we have Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, Consumer Advocate.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Name is Michelangelo, Executive Director of DCA. We stand on our written testimony providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Public Utilities Commission.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Leo Asunchen, Chair of the PUC, will also stand on our written testimony providing comments. And we do have suggested language should the committee decide to move the measure forward.
Thank you. And Ulapono Initiative in support.
Hello, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Michael Klon. I'm the Director of Energy at Ulapono Initiative. Just wanted to briefly reiterate our strong support for this bill. We believe that State of Hawaii has made significant progress and shown tremendous leadership in the policy space, particularly as it relates to energy. As everyone knows, we were the first to go 100% in the RPS. We also have a very forward-looking, very forward-thinking, performance-based ratemaking that's currently being evaluated and updated through the Public Utilities Commission process. And we think that a bill like this really seeks to reassert and reaffirm to everybody our commitment to these policy wins over time. And we wouldn't want, you know, the crisis du jour, crisis of the day, financial crisis, to somehow undermine all of those hard-fought wins by being overly accommodating to a newcomer or exiting from a bankruptcy process. So we're just looking, we think this is a good bill to reassert that and send a message. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we have IBW comments.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chairs, Committee Members. Kika Bukowski, on behalf of IBW 1260. We stand on our written testimony in support and offer proposed amendments to expand protections to include workforce retention and workforce protection. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Climate Protectors Hawaii in support. And that is all the testimony we had submitted in advance. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? All right, I don't think I have questions, so we will move on.
I have a quick question.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
For IBW. Nice try. So the amendments that you suggested, it's my understanding that that language would just be permissive? So these, it would just lay out options for consideration? Is that your understanding of how the amended language would affect the bill?
Layout options for the legislature to consider, or?
For the, for the, sorry? You're right, for the commission.
We're proposing language that would be part of, we're suggesting that if they were to consider an event like this, that they would include language that would protect the workforce in the, in the event of a, an acquiring entity.
Right. But I mean, I guess my question is, even if the, the bill and the law, if it's passed, ultimately contains the amending language, it doesn't necessitate that they actually retain all covered employees, for example, but just that they consider that, that they?
The intent is that they require it.
Okay. Thank you.
And if that's not what's being conveyed, then we'll take another look at it, but.
I think the current language in the bill for all the conditions is, it's not a mandate, it's the PUC can consider imposing these conditions on their, on their approval, but it's also a strong message
Yep.
to the PUC for all of those.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Any other questions? All right. If not, we'll move on to House Bill 978 relating to electric utilities. And this is the bill just amending the receivership statute to include electric utilities along with other types of utilities. First up to testify, we have DCCA.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Michelangelo for DCA. We stand on our testimony providing written comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Public Utilities Commission. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Supporting the bill.
Okay, I was wondering.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Leo Asunchen, Chair of the PUC, will stand on our written testimony providing comments and proposed amendments to the bill.
Thank you. And Climate Protectors Hawaii in support. That's all the testimony we had submitted in advance. Is there anyone else here to testify? Please come forward.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Nate Nelson, on behalf of Hawaii Gas. We just have a concern with respect to the proposed legislation to the extent that it includes gas utilities. I think it doesn't contemplate possibly having a combined structure like we do. We have an unregulated and a regulated side of our business. The Public Utilities Commission would not have jurisdiction over the non-regulated side of our business, and so there's a complication element. I don't necessarily think that it can't be resolved, but we should take a look at with respect to the bill, because it might make it difficult with respect to the unregulated side of our business, because we're operated as one company as a whole, and the Public Utilities Commission would not have jurisdiction over that. And in the event of some type of default bankruptcy or otherwise, the lenders essentially would have control of that receivership through bankruptcy action. So I think it just creates a complication that we need to think through a little bit more with respect to the gas utility.
All right, okay, thank you. Anyone else here to testify on this? If not, members' questions.
Hawaii Gas, can I just ask that you submit your testimony in written form so that we can include it?
Sure, happy to.
Thank you. Good call. I guess a quick question for DCCA. Just following up on Hawaii Gas's comments, should, because I, I was, I'm not sure if the statute specifies regulated public utilities. And my, I was intending to pass it out, just calling them public utilities instead of saying sewer, water, electric, just to simplify that, but do you think that we should have a different approach?
Defer to the legal.
Sorry, Chair, can you restate your question?
Just, I, the testimony from Hawaii Gas just brought up a new, something new that I hadn't thought about or was even aware of. So in changing the statute, if we change this bill, right now, the language kind of lists public, water utilities, sewer utilities, and then we're proposing, the bill proposes to add electric utilities. And I was planning to change it to public utilities, regulated public utilities, but should we not do that, given those comments? Or how do we address the concerns of Hawaii Gas?
Well, if I can split, by the way, Mickey Knox, Attorney for the Consumer Advocate. Well, if I can split, by the way, Mickey Knox, Attorney for the Consumer Advocate, if I can split your question into two parts. So if you change it to public utilities, then it would probably tie back to the definition in 269-1. And the public utilities that are under the commission's jurisdiction, under that definition, would be, would be subject to the statute per that definition. I think that Ms. Nelson for the Hawaii Gas brings up an interesting point that would need to get thought about a little bit.
Okay.
For, for the, I think Hawaii Gas and Young Brothers also has some regulated and some unregulated parts of their business.
Okay, okay. Well, I guess we intend to move this forward, but if you, so probably we don't have that amendment today. But if we can think about what would be appropriate language to address that concern, we'll make a note in the committee report.
Mr. Curtis has brought up a good point. I deferred to the Attorney General's Office about the Hawaii Constitution.
We'll check with our, that's a good point. We'll check with our internal counsel on that. Thank you. Any other questions, members? All right, seeing none. The last bill on the agenda, this agenda today, House Bill 976 relating to renewable fuel. And this establishes a tax credit for sustainable aviation fuel, essentially. First up to testify, we have the Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha, Maria Tome, Hawaii State Energy Office. Will stand on our written testimony, providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Department of Taxation with comments.
Morning, Clinton Piper, Department of Taxation. Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, will stand on our written comments.
Thank you. Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Life of the Land, comments.
Aloha, Henry Curtis, Life of the Land. I believe we're in support of the bill rather than comments. Certainly, aviation is one of the three things that we have to address greenhouse gas emissions with. In any way, we can sharply reduce greenhouse gas emissions associated with aviation is good. Mahalo.
Thank you. Climate Protectors Hawaii in support.
Ted Bowlin, Climate Protectors Hawaii. I did file in support, but I've had second thoughts, which include, sorry about that, folks. I certainly support more aviation fuel. You know, as Henry just said, we, we've got a big problem with greenhouse gas emissions from aviation. But how you burn it, how you produce it, how you produce the fuel matters. And if you use, for example, biomass or CND waste to generate aviation fuel, you're not making improvement in the environment, you're making it worse. So I think there's some provisions in here. I would restore the life cycle greenhouse gas requirement that is stricken from the bill and a few other provisions along the way. So please look at the details of the bill. They matter in terms of environmental protection. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Americans for Democratic Action in opposition. Hawaii Renewable Fuels Coalition in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Nahelani Parsons. I'm here to testify on behalf of the Hawaii Renewable Fuels Coalition in strong support of this measure. Our coalition includes Hawaii Farm Bureau, Ponopacific Airlines from America, which is Hawaiian and Alaska, Par Hawaii and Pacific Biodiesel, plus many more. We are working on growing camelina as a crop to make renewable fuel that could be used to reduce carbon emissions for our transportation and for our utilities, including the area where we use the most of our energy, which is in our aviation. Our written testimony includes some amendments that we've carefully worked through with many of the stakeholders that are testifying on this measure today, including DOTAX, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, and Pacific Biodiesel. We respectfully ask the committee to consider those amendments for adoption today, and we appreciate you hearing this bill. So thank you.
Thank you. Ponopacific Land Management in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Chris Bennett, on behalf of Ponopacific. Ponopacific is currently growing an oil seed called camelina. When harvested, it can be processed into renewable fuel for our planes, ships, and utilities. Over the past year and a half, Ponopacific has partnered with two of Hawaii's largest food producers, Alun Farms and Mahipono, as well as medical dairies to grow camelina. The results of these trials have been very encouraging, with yields ranging from 1,000 pounds an acre up to 2,000 pounds an acre, which is in line with our goal of achieving about 1,200 to 1,400 pounds an acre. Camelina produces 30% to 40% oil from the seeds that can be processed into renewable fuel, while the remaining 60% to 70% produces a seed cake that's an approved animal feed, suitable for cattle, chickens, and other livestock. These two revenue streams make camelina production a viable option for Hawaii's farmers to grow in addition to the current food crops. We stand on our written testimony in support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And then Alaska and Hawaiian Airlines in support. Jacob Aki on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. We stand in strong support. And I'm here with my colleague, who would also like to provide comments.
Hi, good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Perusso, and members of the committee. My name is Alana James, Managing Director of Sustainability Initiatives at Hawaiian Airlines, here today representing Alaska and Hawaiian Airlines. I'll just briefly reiterate our strong support for this bill. This bill establishes incentives to promote the production and import of sustainable aviation fuel, or SAF, in Hawaii. SAF is widely acknowledged as the most promising technology to address aviation carbon emissions. It's a proven drop-in fuel. It works with existing engines, existing fuel infrastructure, as long as it's blended up to 50% with conventional jet fuel. Also, SAF has a really meaningful reduction in life cycle greenhouse gas emissions. With SAF, you can get 50% to 80% lower life cycle greenhouse gas emissions when you compare it to conventional jet fuel. Now, the tax incentives in this bill are intended to bridge the cost gap to conventional fuels and also importantly, to provide incremental value for SAF compared to renewable diesel in order to level the playing field with renewable diesel. The bill also establishes a 50% life cycle greenhouse gas reduction threshold in order to qualify for the credit. Now, these incentives represent a positive step forward in the state's economy-wide decarbonization goals, particularly in the aviation sector, which is a critical industry here in our islands. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And then next up, we have Par Hawaii in support.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Marky Noah from Par Hawaii. Thank you very much for allowing us to be present here and hearing our bill. You know, as a refinery, part of this transition into 100% renewable energy for our state, I just kind of want to make sure that you guys understand also that, you know, we have different sectors we, we impact, including aviation, utilities, ground transportation, and aviation marine. So as we kind of move forward, the good news is that Par Hawaii has already invested over $90 million in our refinery. We're collaborating with stakeholders such as the Hawaii Renewable Fuels Coalition and many of our customers who are planning to adopt these renewable fuels by the end of the year. We would really appreciate if you take a really hard look at this bill. And these incentives would help us create a bigger demand in our economy today. Thank you again for letting us hear, hearing this bill for HB 976. And I'll be here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Energy Justice Network, Mike Yule on Zoom. Go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Chair Lowen, Vice Chair Perusso, and Committee Members. Our written testimony, which I won't try to read, addresses several concerns about the production systems, emissions, and problems with investing in differently dirty, burnable fuels when we ought to be focusing first on all other energy sectors where there are clean, non-burn alternatives already available. To flesh out some concerns that aren't spelled out in my testimony, though, it's very questionable whether greenhouse gases are actually reduced with biofuels and waste-based fuels. Carbon is not the only thing that matters, and the studies should not be based just on carbon intensity but on various other measures of pollutants and production systems, including the use of biotechnology in production systems. But I primarily like to draw attention to this issue of adding construction and demolition waste and other wastes as feedstocks to make this so-called sustainable aviation fuel. Construction and demolition waste contains a lot of different materials, including painted and treated woods, was that chlorine sources, PVC plastics, lead and mercury from pants, treated wood chemicals like arsenic, copper, and chromium. And these are very toxic when burned. Some of the testimony I saw on the packet from the Hawaii Natural Energy Institute on page 41 affirms that there are high levels of arsenic, chromium, and lead in construction and demolition waste, with arsenic concentrations 200 times higher than the clean wood that they found in their research. The research also shows high levels of hydrochloric acid, copper, and zinc in that construction and demolition waste. But they don't go as far as pointing out the significant conclusion from this, in that there's a number of public, published studies showing that those metals, particularly the copper and the zinc, are the most potent catalysts for dioxin formation. So you put them in there with the same stuff that produces the hydrochloric acid, that chlorine and the hydrocarbons. And you have a recipe for making the most toxic chemicals known to science, dioxins and furans, which are produced in the same conditions that are present in the production systems of this so-called sustainable aviation fuel. And those chemicals will end up concentrating, bioaccumulating in the food chain where 92% of our exposure is to from eating meat and dairy products. So even if we're thinking, gee, that plant that aloha carbon wants to build in Caramo Industrial Park, well, those emissions are mostly going to blow out to sea, except for about one day a week when it blows back toward people. Those pollutants will come back to us in the form of seafood. So I think there are serious toxic concerns. The waste-based fuels need to be removed from this bill at a minimum. But this bill in general, there's a lot to be questioned about whether it's as sustainable as they claim. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then we have Hawaii Farm Bureau in support. Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. We have submitted mostly technical comments. Some of them have been addressed in the amendments sought by the Hawaii Renewable Fuels Coalition. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And then we have Ted Metros in opposition.
Hello, I'm Ted Metros. I used to work for Par Hawaii. I have significant comments on this bill. My comments for so long, I'm sure you didn't read them, so let me say, date a few of them here. This is a very big bill. The $80 million is per year. It's going to be at least 20 years. And there's projections that we're going to need SAF well beyond 2040 and 2045. So you're talking about a bill that's almost $1.5 billion or more in terms of its expenditure, basically a public subsidy for an oil company and for the airlines. I will go ahead and describe a little bit more of it. But the, the problem with the bill is it does not deliver on the ambitions that it has proposed and advocated for. There's just not the type of return that you're expecting. This bill, at best, at best, covers 10% of the aviation fuel. And that's only if we cut things down and really look at it very narrowly. I would like to point out that this sentiment is not mine. The State Energy Office actually expresses a very good concern as well. I would call it breaking the bank. The State Energy Office is much more diplomatic. They state that the proposed structure to increase renewable fuels' tax credits and amounts and eliminate the cap could have a disproportionate impact on the state budget and might undermine the overall support for renewable energy. So if you owe, if this bill costs 80 million a year, and that's just for the production portion of it, another 50 million per year for the import side, which doesn't get its fair share, it's a very robust bill. So what can you do to, to limit and restrict it? The very last line is the most important thing that was provided in testimony from DOTAX. So I do want to highlight it. DOTAX also recommends making the credit non-refundable as refundable credits are more susceptible to waste, fraud, and abuse. That's a very important step. It will put a realistic cap such that the benefactors of this bill, which incidentally will never make its way into the hands of local farmers because there's no mechanism for getting there at all. Anyhow, this will put a serious cap because the income taxes that people have liabilities on here are far, far short of the $80 million per year that might be generated. And as I mentioned, let's even say it was 10%, of what we needed. That could be 800 million a year if it was extrapolated on out. Now, in addition to eliminating the refundable nature of the credits, I would ask that you add in a good standing clause to this bill. The IRS has a tax bill, and they are providing Par already with a $1.75 per gallon tax credit, which was the catalyst and the driving for putting the renewable project together. That should have been enough. But the good standing clause would ensure that any outstanding liabilities and issues, and some of which are open, would be resolved before the state doles out additional tax dollars, public subsidies for the development of it. This, to try to put a little quantification, Par has an estimated number of barrels, close to 60 million gallons a year would be produced. Maybe 60 of that, 60% of that would be SAF. That translates into 36 million gallons. 36 million gallons, the reason why I'm going through this math, 36 million gallons times the 2.56 per gallon equates to $90 million of subsidies in one year. So immediately, with just a small portion of the, of the credits, they are consumed in year one. And then, of course. So the, there's no room or opportunity for any other renewable fuel to come on in whatsoever.
Can you summarize quickly the rest?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, again, the, the reinstatement is key. This, this bill has the potential to really, you know that down the road, as in years past, the credit has been asked for and extended again, and it's inevitably going to be done again. I did want to mention, the reason why we're here is because we've got an ultimatum. The state got an ultimatum from Par to either provide tax credits or they're going to be shipping the renewable fuel out of state. And so the reason why we're here is to provide credits so that they don't do that. The second reason why we're here is because the airlines, who claim to be fully committed to the renewable program, they will not pay additional dollars and make a financial commitment in addition to their emotional support that they have provided for the bill. And so it'd be nice if the coalition could work together and actually throw in a dollar or two per gallon and buy it local.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. We have additional testimony from individuals, two in support, three in opposition, one with comments. Is there anyone else here to testify on this measure? Please come forward.
Apologies, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Danielle Bass, State Sustainability Coordinator of the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. It appears that our testimony was not enrolled. I'm happy to resubmit as late. Our office offers comments on this measure. Due to the fact that it's not online, I'm happy to just quickly summarize. Essentially, we find this, this bill to align with the state's clean energy and decarbonization laws by addressing our aviation emissions coming into the state of Hawaii. We also find this to be in alignment with the State of Hawaii's Carbon Offsetting Report. We also find this to be in alignment with the state of Hawaii's carbon offsetting report, which was published by the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development in 2019. That report was commissioned by this legislature to determine ways that the state of Hawaii could reduce our carbon emissions and greenhouse gas emissions. Given that the Office of Plan and Sustainable Development found that carbon offsetting, in fact, limits, and we strongly dissuaded the state's use of reliance of carbon offset programs, we do, we are generally in support of sustainable aviation fuels. We do recommend that use in terms of specific financing, tax credits, and energy, energy management. We do defer to the Department of Taxation, HSCA. I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. And did you want to testify, Laura?
Aloha, Chair Vice Chair members of the committee, Laura Kaakua for Department of Transportation. I believe that our testimony may have been submitted latest as well, so I'll make sure that you have it following the hearing. The Department of Transportation supports the intent of House Bill nine seven six to increase the use of renewable fuels statewide and to establish tax credits to promote the expansion of local production of sustainable aviation fuel. Department of Transportation is currently developing our greenhouse gas reduction plan, which will provide Department of Transportation and the public with immediate actions we can take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to meet our 2045 net zero goal, and to provide for zero emissions in the transportation sector long term. Although our specific strategies are still in development for our plan, it's clear from our initial calculations that we will not be able to reach zero emissions within the aviation portion of our transportation sector without a large increase in sustainable aviation fuel production. And so that's why we support the, the measures intent and ask the committee to advance the development, adoption, and scaling of sustainable aviation fuel and renewable fuels as part of our collective efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Mahalo.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further testimony, members, any questions? All right, in the interest of time, I think we'll go ahead and recess for decision-making and be right back. First up, we have House Bill four seven zero relating to noise. For this bill, we're going to make some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and then we will defect the date and move this forward. Members, any questions or comments or concerns? Singnan, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB four seven zero with amendments, noting Chair and Vice Chair as I. Representative Kahaloa.
Aye.
Representative Kush.
Aye.
Representative Quinlan.
Aye.
And Representative Ward is excused. Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And House Bill seven four two relating to transit-oriented development. On this, we're going to continue this discussion for the time being and just defect the date on this to July one, three thousand, and move this forward. Members, any comments? Singnan, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation HB seven four two is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye, noting the presence of all I mentioned before. Are there any noes? Are there any reservations? Singnan, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And then for House Bill three forty and House Bill two four three, these are somewhat similar subject matter in terms of what they're attempting to address. So we are going to use House Bill two four three as the vehicle and defer House Bill three four zero. And what we will do is take the contents of three four zero with some amendments and put that into two four three. The amendments will include on page four, line eighteen, replace within a hundred and eighty days of the effective date of this act with the date certain of October first, 2026, so that will, should satisfy the concerns of the AG and also extend that timeline a little for the PUC. We will adopt the HSEA suggested amendments to add language to include electric vehicle charging and, but I think in their testimony, they had a typo of a date of July first, 2025, so we will make that date also October first, 2026. We will blank out the cost-sharing fee of three hundred fifty dollars, so we can consider if that should be greater, and we will move, remove Section Six, which relates to the Hawaii, the HIRA Administrator. And the Section Seven reporting requirements, we will require that of the PUC. And then, page five subsection four, we will delete, provided that the upgrade shall be completed within three months of a certain date, again, to address concerns, and then we'll defect the date of July, to July first, three thousand. Members, those are all the suggested amendments. Any questions or comments? Singnan, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
On HB two four three, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Are there any reservations? Any no votes? Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. For House Bill three fifty, this is relating to the heat, the water heater requirements. We will just, on this for now, defect the date to July first, three thousand, noting that we need to look into that suggested amendment from Solareb just to better understand what the impacts of that would be. So with that, any comments? Singnan, Vice Chair.
On House Bill three five zero, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Any reservations? Any no votes? Singnan, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
House Bill three four six relating to electric vehicle charging infrastructure, EV-ready, affordable housing. On this, we will just defect the date to July first, three thousand, and move this forward for further consideration. Members, any comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On House Bill three four six, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Are there any reservations? Any no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And on House Bill three six six relating to renewable energy, this is the streamlined process for contested cases with EISs. We will accept the amendments offered by Office of Planning and Sustainable Development and make some additional technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and defect the date to July first, three thousand. And that is all. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On House Bill three six six, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Are there any reservations? Representative Quinlan, reservations? Any no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And then on House Bill three four two relating to a renewable gas tariff, we have some amendments here, so on page four subsection B, we will change this wording to, or as otherwise determined by the PUC. On page four subsection C, we'll strike out designated time period and replace that with monthly billing cycle. We will move this to session laws instead of having it in HRS. And I think there's an additional amendment on page three, line fifteen. We will change that to read, "The Public Utilities Commission shall establish an initial revised renewable gas tariff or tariffs no later than six months after the filing of a completed application for a proposed renewable gas tariff, the completeness of which shall be determined by the Public Utilities Commission no later than thirty days after the application is filed." We have some technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and we will defect the date to July first, three thousand. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation on House Bill three four two is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye. Are there any reservations? Any no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Okay, on House Bill seven eight six, this is relating to deposit beverage container recycling. We are going to defer decision-making to, to Thursday, wait, hang on a second. Thursday, January thirtieth, at the end of the nine AM agenda. On House Bill seven fifty relating to the environment, this is the Extended Producer Responsibility Needs Assessment. We are going to amend the members of the Advisory Council to include HFIA's recommendation to add a representative from a business that manufactures consumer packaged goods for sale in Hawaii, and we will also add a representative from the composting industry. We will add a section to this, actually, maybe we won't do that for now. We will add a note to the committee report that we would like to look at funding this out of the Deposit Beverage Container Special Fund and, or, you know, we'll work with Department of Health to come up with language to allow for that. And then I just also wanted to note, we appreciate the request for exemptions for prescriptions in certain items, and think that's probably a valid request, but because this is just a needs assessment, we want to not start considering a bunch of different exemptions that are going to come into play later. And then defect the date to July first, three thousand. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On House Bill seven five zero, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye, noting the absence of Representative Quinlan. Are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
And Ward. Yes, but he was always. Oh, okay, okay. Next, we have House Bill three three nine relating to electric utilities. So for this, we're going to add some amendments based on the PUC testimony, so that instead of the hundred eighty-day pause and competing bids being submitted to the PUC, we would require that, put that requirement onto the electric utility to show, let me just read this language, it'll be easier than trying to paraphrase. So we'll direct the electric utility company that's subject of an application for a proposed acquisition, merger, or consolidation by an acquiring entity to demonstrate that that company has first solicited bids from acquired entities that operate under non-investor-owned utility ownership model. And so they'll have to show the PUC that they solicited competing bids and explain why they were or were not accepted and would then, you know, if they were accepted, they would then present that to the Public Utilities Commission. So we're going to amend the language to include that suggestion in, in the correct language. And then we'll also adopt the amendments of IBW, suggested amendments. We have additional technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and we'll defect the date to July first, three thousand. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On House Bill three three nine, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye, noting the absence of Representative Quinlan and Representative Ward. Are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
And for House Bill nine seven eight relating to electric utilities, I think for this, we're going to delete the appropriation section, make some technical amendments, defect the date to July first, three thousand, and then note in the committee report the concern raised by Hawaii Gas, and that will be looking, you know, in future committees to potentially address that concern. And defect the date to July first, three thousand. Did I say that already? If, if not, members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On House Bill nine seven eight, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye, noting the absence of Representative Quinlan and Representative Ward. Are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
Thank you. And then finally, we have House Bill nine seven six relating to renewable fuel. This is the tax credit that we were just discussing, so we have a few amendments here. We will adopt, there was one suggested amendment from Life of the Land, I believe, that we will adopt to strike through allowing carbon offsetting to be part of the, the life cycle analysis, I believe. Is that correct? Okay, well, we're going to adopt the amendment from Life of the Land, and then also the amendments of the Hawaii Renewable Fuels Coalition. And we will blank out the dollar amounts on page seven and eight and seventeen and eighteen. We will make some technical, additional technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, defect the date to July first, three thousand, and move this forward. Members, any discussion? Go ahead.
So I support you in moving this forward and moving the conversation forward, but I do hope that we have much more conversation on this because I find that I have a lot more to learn about this area of sustainable aviation fuels. So I, I'm looking forward to those conversations, and as this bill progresses through, I hope that we can pay close attention to some of the testimony, the implications of some of the testimony that was submitted today.
Yes, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
On House Bill nine seven six, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair voting aye, and noting the excused absence of Representative Quinlan and Representative Ward. Are there any reservations or no votes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation has been adopted.
All right, thank you. We're going to adjourn this hearing and then just the next one will start as soon as we can. I think there's some members that have to pause for a minute and go do other things, so apologies for such a late start to the next agenda, but we're adjourned. Thank you. All right, we are back reconvening, or sorry, convening the 10:00 AM agenda. Sorry for the delay. The Joint Committees on Energy and Environmental Protection and the Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems, and welcome to Chair Kahaloa, who is also a member of EEP. We have one bill on our agenda this morning. House Bill 760 relating to taxation. This is a carbon tax bill that we see every year. First up to testify, we have Department of Taxation with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members. I'm Eliza from the Department of Taxation. We stand on our written testimony comments, and we have some suggestions in case you pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Department of Budget and Finance offering comments. Hawaii State Department of Health with comments. Hawaii State Department of Agriculture in support.
Good morning, Chair Lowen, Chair Kahaloa, Vice Chair Kirsch, and no one else.
Hi, I'm Matthew Loc, Ag Development Administrator. And the department will stand by its testimony as submitted in support of this bill. We deeply appreciate the legislature's intent to reestablish the Agricultural Development and Food Security Special Fund, which was repealed earlier. Thank you for that. Mahalo.
Thank you. And then we have Kauai Climate Action Coalition in support. Citizens Climate Lobby in support. Life of the Land in opposition.
Aloha. Two chairs, two vice chairs, I guess. One vice chair. Aloha. Life of Land has been actively and aggressively fighting greenhouse gases for more than 20 years. We won the two Hawaii Supreme Court cases requiring life cycle greenhouse gas analysis in all combustion applications at the Public Utilities Commission. We note that in the last 25 years, there has been only one fossil fuel plant built by Hiko Miko Helco. They built a Campbell Industrial Park CT-1 plant and powered it by biofuels. But when the Schofield project generator came online and Schofield was converted to biofuels, the CT-1 unit was converted to petroleum. That's the only case of a fossil fuel coming online in the last 25 years. Going forward, everything coming online is going to be renewables. So we have three choices. We can continue transitioning to renewables at the current rate. We can accelerate it through legislation, or we can tax fossil fuels. The tax has no mandate to increase renewable energy. It simply generates funds like the TAT to use for whatever you want to use it for. So it's interesting that we found a study that found that 78% of the 100 largest fossil fuel company, oil and gas companies in the world, support a carbon tax. After all, it legitimizes what they're doing. They pay the tax, they're part of the solution, they can greenwash their advertising, everything is fantastic for them. Economists love carbon taxes because, for some reason, they're against mandates and they want to tweak the marketplace and then get paid to do studies on figuring out what the tweak has done. A mandate rapidly increases the use of renewables. The Indigenous Environmental Network and the Climate Justice Alliance, a coalition of about 100 frontline groups in the United States, said, quote, "Carbon pricing is a name for a tool that governments, financial institutions, and corporations have adopted in order to try to reconcile their continuing commitment to fossil fuel use with the need to appear to take total action on climate change," unquote. So you could, as a legislature, make a dramatic reduction in greenhouse gases by saying that no new fossil fuel-powered vehicles will be sold in this state by 2030, going forward. You could take drastic action, as you're doing, for sustainable aviation fuel. Or you could say, we'll just impose a tax on carbon emissions, on the use of fossil fuels. Interestingly enough, there will be two sectors that will be hit hardest with a carbon tax. First are big island residents who have, are far away from the tourism sections of Kohala and that need to drive to work, and there's inadequate bus service on the big island. So they will be the ones who will be hit hard. The other group that will be hit hard are diversified farmers, who will see every aspect of farming taxed while imports escape the tax, widening the gap between the price of imported food versus domestic food. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carbon Cashback Hawaii, Douglas Hagan, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chairs and Vice Chair, Chair Lowen, Chair Kahaloa, and Vice Chair Kirsch. Thank you for hearing HB 760. Now is the time to put a price on pollution. Carbon cashback complements and accelerates all of the initiatives that drive our state towards renewables. Carbon cashback benefits not burdens lower-income families and is proven to reduce emissions. Carbon cashback is an incremental step forward. It would reduce Hawaii carbon emissions by 10% to 14%. That's the equivalent tailpipe emissions of 400,000 fossil fuel-powered vehicles per year. Please support this efficient, effective, and equitable bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Climate Future Forum and Citizens Climate Lobby at Iolani School in support. Coalition Earth in support. Grassroots Institute of Hawaii in opposition. Retail Merchants of Hawaii in opposition on Zoom, not present. Citizens Climate Lobby at UH Manoa in support. Tax Foundation of Hawaii offering comments on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair Lowen and Chair Kahaloa. This is Jade McMillan on behalf of the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We've submitted some comments on the measure. We'll stand on our written comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Greenpeace Hawaii in opposition on Zoom.
Aloha, can you hear me? You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, sorry. Great, thank you so much for having us name and testify. Greenpeace Hawaii is one of the oldest and the largest climate environmental organization in the world. Greenpeace works with the climate scientists. We have our Greenpeace Research Laboratories and School of Value Sciences in University of Exeter in the UK. And our scientists do a lot of climate modeling and focus on climate change and environmental issues. The problem with this bill and this whole idea is a design flaw. Now, they have plenty of planes they tried to build in the early days, and a lot of planes didn't fly, and they didn't fly because of their design. And that's basically built into the problem with carbon cashback, which is what this is all based on. The idea here is that we're going to raise the price of fuel, forcing people, it's punitive, to gather the vehicles and then go to other alternatives. What those other alternatives, as Henry Curtis was just talking about, are not available for folks. So it's going to really hurt people. So these pricing and climate and taxing schemes have been out for 30 years. There was a study done, of all 37 studies looking at, will they reduce carbon emissions? And Jessica Green, the professor of the University of Toronto, who did the study, found that they really only decreased carbon emissions from 0% to 2%, which is almost nothing. And she said, "We've had 30 years' experience of carbon pricing and not a hell of a lot to show for it," which is true. So we already know that carbon pricing and taxing cannot, will not, and has not cut carbon emissions. As Henry Curtis was talking about, and the retail merchants are also stating that it's going to raise prices on all goods, so it's going to, people are pretty close to the edge here financially, and it will raise prices on all goods and services. As also Henry Curtis was mentioning, our super commuters are going to have a big problem because it will raise prices for them. There are some 17,000 super commuters in the state, and they are going to be hit the hardest. And last year, they had this bill, and you could figure out how much money they were going to get back and how much they were going to be paid. We found definitely these commuters are going to be hurt. I tried to find it in the bill now, and I couldn't figure out how much they're going to actually be paying, get the idea of how much they're going to get back, but I still think the super commuters are going to be hurt, which is not going to work out for anyone. The other thing is that they're putting the horse before the cart. You know, as I said, it's punitive, it's forcing people, you've got to get out of your vehicles, they're going to raise the price, but then there is no infrastructure available. There are no buses, there are no charging stations, there's no rebate to get an electric vehicle. So that would be a better way to go, if you really want to get people out of their vehicles and really want to cut carbon emissions. Their other thing is that they focus on Canada, is their, you know, the ship, that this is the best thing ever. But they, what they do, Citizens Climate Lobby kind of cherry picks their data, and they only focus on the data that supports their issues. Actually, Canada's having a big problem now.
Dave, can you summarize?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Anyway, yes, I didn't mean to go on like that, but yes, we do not support it, and please do not pass this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then we have Hawaiian Islands Republican Women in opposition. Airlines for America in opposition. Hawaii Farmers Union in support. Kauai Island Utility Cooperative in opposition. Maui Chamber of Commerce offering comments. And then we have an additional, hang on, let me call some people who are here in person. We have Paul Bernstein in support. She's on the list. Audrey, sure. Audrey Lynn on Zoom, are you still there? Okay. Sorry for the delay. Go ahead. Thank you.
Aloha, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. My name is Audrey Lynn. I'm 18 years old, and I'm a senior at Iolani School in Honolulu, Hawaii. There's the bell. I'm actually in the classroom right now. Today, I stand in strong support of HB 760. As a high school student, I view climate change as the greatest threat to humanity today, and therefore, I urge our state legislature to adopt HB 760, a bill that places a carbon fee on fossil fuels, which are the very emissions that warm the earth and create climate havoc in Hawaii and globally. At Iolani, in both class and club meetings, my teachers, peers, and I have discussed HB 760. We have evaluated data, and we see it as an effective method to incentivize both businesses and individuals to use fewer fossil fuels and shift towards renewable energy. Additionally, I would also like to propose one amendment to HB 760. I respectfully request that the committee replace Section 4 with Section 4 of HB 1375. And with this change, all the revenues, other than administrative fees, would be returned to all the people. And I would argue that this amendment in Section 4 makes our communities better off. So yeah, my name is Audrey Lynn. I am a representative for youth people, or young people, and the Climate Future Forum, and I urge the state legislature to please pass HB 760. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony for the bill.
Thank you so much. All right, now we'll go to Paul.
Mahalo, Chair Lowen, Chair Kahaloa, Vice Chair Kirsch. I'm one of the economists that people disdain, I guess, but I'd like to address two key points of opposition of the bill. First, there's a claim that carbon pricing is ineffective and simply doesn't hold up, or, sorry, doesn't work, and that simply doesn't hold up to empirical evidence. To say carbon pricing doesn't work is to say that if the price of Coke continued to rise, people would drink the same amount of Coke and not switch to Pepsi. We know prices matter. We check our Long's ads when they come out. We go into the store, we check what the price is. Pricing carbon creates a financial disincentive to reduce emissions. It is exactly the principle we want, namely, polluters pay. And in addition, the Hero studies show exactly this, right? That carbon pricing reduces emissions. As for the second concern about the impact of the policy to households, I want to second Audrey Lynn's recommendation that the bill be changed, just simply swap out Section 4, which deals with how the dividends come about to people. Change it so that almost all the dividends, except those for administrative issues, go back to the except those for administrative issues, go back to the people, go back to the people in equal shares. It makes the bill progressive, and as the UHERO studies have found, and various national studies at the federal level, this leaves the vast majority of low and middle income households better off. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Joanne Yukimura on Zoom. Go ahead, Joanne.
Okay, thank you. Chair Lowen, Chair Kahaloa, and Vice Chair Kirsch, thank you so much, Chair Lowen, for hearing this bill on the most important issue of our lifetime. My name is Joanne Yukimura. I support the concept of the carbon fee as embodied in House Bill 760. I also support the concept of a dividend, but not in the way it is presently structured for only low income families. I also do not support any carbon fee revenues going into the general fund, except for the purposes of this bill. My reasons are explained in my written testimony, which I hope you will read. There are two things to remember here. A fee on carbon is essential if we are to stop or reduce climate change. And two, the cashback makes the policy compassionate and workable. 2023 was the hottest year on record in the history of the planet, until 2024, when that record and the 1.5 degree benchmark were both surpassed. And in 2023, we witnessed with horror the unimaginable that happened in Lahaina. And then, though it seemed nothing could be worse, then LA fires happened on a more massive and terrifying scale. There's a lot of concern about cost of living. Well, climate change also increases the cost of living, which everyone's talking about in Hawaii. What will the cost of building materials be after the Lahaina and LA fires? Or the cost of insurance? Or the cost of food as natural disasters damage crops and lifestyle? In Hawaii, most of the focus is on adaptation, which is futile if we don't address cause. When a water pipe breaks, we don't try to adapt to it. We fix the broken pipe. So let's fix, let's slow down and reverse climate change now. To do this, Hawaii must significantly reduce the use of fossil fuels, which since the pandemic has barely gone down. That's because a crucial policy framework has not yet been put in place. You, the legislature, can change this. In a study of 41 countries and 1,500 climate policies, carbon pricing, which increases the price of carbon to reflect the, its real cost, was found to be effective in significantly reducing greenhouse gases. Together, the carbon fee and its universal dividend will provide an effective and compassionate way for Hawaii to transition to a sustainable fossil fee, fossil fuel free future, as we do our part to bring the planet back into balance. With your courageous and clear sighted leadership, Hawaii can again lead the way. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you so much. And then we have Mark Healy on Zoom. Please go ahead.
Hi, it's actually Mary Healy.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I misread that. That was my fault. Mary, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much. Aloha, and thank you for hearing my testimony. I strongly oppose HB 760 and its companion SB 633. Please vote no on further taxation. This carbon tax or carbon emissions tax proposed in this bill is fundamentally a massive increase in the rate of taxation. The bill's language is not in the interests of we, the people of Hawaii, or the state's economy. Hawaii has the highest cost of living in the USA. The bill will harm all families and individuals, especially low income families, which is unacceptable to the state's already overtaxed and burdened citizens. It is unacceptable for the legislature to ignore all the concerns about local kama'a and the Kanaka Native Hawaiian residents leaving the state, only to introduce yet another tax at the state level. While this bill includes rebates to those considered low income, the rebate process could confuse families and ultimately lose that income if not done effectively and prudently. It also punishes those who make above the median income as they receive no rebate. The incremental increases in the tax rate over time inherently place a burden on all families, especially lower income families, and the state has a rising cost of living. Hawaii already has the highest energy rate in the country. It is not a valid solution. I'd like to highlight the economic burden on residents, businesses, the impact on the agricultural sector, which stands to suffer greatly and is essential for our sustainability. Farmers face numerous challenges from further taxation, and this tax will undermine the goal of food security. Also, ineffective use of funds collected through similar taxes will lead to public distrust. The tax credit provision in the bill will, while intended to offset some of the economic harm it will inflict, many economics, 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 I'm so sorry, affiliated with the Economic Research Organization at the University of Hawaii suggest a carbon tax of this type would cause a reduction of total economic output. Prosperity needs to be nurtured in the state of Hawaii. And further harboring back to the testimony of Ms. Yukimura, I believe that a lot of what happened in Maui and what's happening in California is due to that failed leadership. And you cannot blame it entirely on climate change. And I thank you for hearing my testimony on this important matter. And I hope that you make the right decision and vote no.
Thank you. And then we have Matthew Geier in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair. Nice to see you folks again. Thank you for allowing me to testify in support of HB 760. I didn't see anywhere in the bill that says we need to stop doing all the other things we're doing for the environment in the past or in the future. Instead, what this bill does is actually help encourage all these efforts to go farther, go a little bit faster. It's not a drastic increase. This is a very gentle increase over a period of time that allows people to adjust, while at the same time providing a crucial rebate back to low income families that will really help them, especially given all the uncertainty we face over these next several years. So, yeah, in that regard, I feel like it stands like a rebuke to everything that's happening at the federal level right now. This is something we can do to take our stand right now and do something to push back against all the craziness out there. But more importantly, it's, it's going to help low income families, and it's going to support our environmental benefits as well. Mahalo for thank you. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. That is all the people who signed up to testify in person or on Zoom. We had additional testimony submitted from 31 individuals in support, 42 in opposition, and one with comments. Was there anyone else here to testify on this measure? If not members, questions?
Chair, I do have one quick question.
Yes, no, no, take your time.
And I'm not sure which group could answer this, but is there a breakdown, just for example, in 2026, the 315 per barrel, what that might translate to on a per gallon basis of regular, how much?
All right. So the 315, just to be clear, is the dollar five you currently have in the barrel tax, right? And then we're increasing that, or the bill calls for increasing it by $2.10 to $3.15. So that additional increment, the $2.10 per barrel, is the equivalent of only 5 cents a gallon. So therefore, the first year somebody driving 10,000 miles with a 25 mile per gallon car consumes 400 gallons of gasoline, that's only an additional $20 for the whole year, just to put it.
Thank you for making that conversion. I appreciate that. No further questions.
Any further questions, members? All right, seeing none, I think we're going to defer decision making on this, just due to we don't have quorum to vote. And I think there's some additional desire for some other members to take a closer look at the bill. So we're going to defer decision making to Thursday, January 30th, at the end of agenda, end of the 9:00 AM agenda.
Thank you, Chair. Agreed.
Same recommendation. So we are adjourned. Thank you.